Reverend Hutterick.
Yeah.
Councilman Hager.
Here.
Councilwoman Tice.
Here.
Councilman Progman. Councilman Smith.
Here.
Carrie Sutton. Here. Jim Cough.
Here.
Laurie Stubber. Diane Williams. Kylie Latta.
Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the visible with liberty and justice for all. All right, well, the first thing on the agenda is the Local Law Number One of 2003. And the title of that is to Implement Real Property Tax Law Section 466A, Tax Exemption for Volunteer Fire and Ambulance Workers. This was introduced last month at the meeting. Notice has gone out for the necessary public hearing that this entails. So what I will do to get to start it is ask for a motion from a board member and a second to open the public hearing.
Make the motion.
Lori makes the motion. Second by Carl. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And he opposed, so carry. Just a quick brief description, if I may, for some people that might not be familiar with this. The point of this is the state has given the opportunity to, for local government, to grant tax exemptions for volunteer firefighter and EMS personnel. And it's a, you can do, I believe, up to 10% of the property back can be exempted. But that can be changed if that's what the local taxing jurisdiction or the way the body wants to do. This applies to town, village, fire district, and school district, and county. And the county has already passed this. So you're going to see a reduction, well, not a reduction, but those who are volunteers. In the past, you could do that for a lot less, but the exemption was less. Or you could put in for a tax credit on your New York State income tax return. So the state has changed this a little bit. They've given permission to local towns, and I'll just say towns because that's how it applies to us, but to put this exemption, hey Bob? Hey. Put this exemption in place and to have it apply starting with the, not the tax bill that comes out in January, but the tax bill that comes out the following year. And you just can't say anymore, "I'm a member." You have to also meet certain criteria that would be set by the volunteer fire department and/or the EMS agency. And what happens here also is you'll have some people who don't own a house. So how can they benefit from this? Well, there's a provision for that. They can keep applying on their income tax for the $200 credit, which they would get off their taxes. Or you could have a husband and wife, or it doesn't have to be husband and wife, but two people that own the same parcel that would be subject to it. And they, by the way, they have to be a resident. You can't be a volunteer member on weekends and then get that. It's the same thing as if you were applying for STAR. But if you have one person that, or two people that own a particular parcel that's going to be subject to this, the one person can do that and the other person can apply for the tax credit. So it covers everybody. Now, the state is also looking to get out of those $200 tax exemptions, or credits rather, by throwing this over to the local government. But generally speaking, all the input that I've heard from other places and what the intent of this is, is to try to continue or offer more opportunity for people to stay on in the emergency services, particularly in rural areas like ours, and those supplies everywhere. And as we all know, that's a subject that comes up all the time about the difficulties in keeping and retaining people. So now they are a lot more incentive with a big exemption like that against your property. But you have to live there, and it has to be your primary residence. You can't live here half and half or something like that. So that said, that's the, you know, the 10,000-foot-high explanation of what this is all about. But so, do any of the board members have any questions, comments, before I throw it open to the folks that are here? Any questions or comments of their own? I know you've had the chance to take a look at it, so. So, questions from folks that are here? Comments?
I'm surprised that it's only 10%. That's not much of an encouragement.
Well, it depends on how much you're, yeah.
Yeah, I'd just say if it's one of the services.
That's the most that they would allow.
Yeah, I understand, but I would be surprised.
It's a lot better than the 150 bucks I used to throw out.
Yeah, no, I understand, it's an incredible, I mean, it's a real benefit that people like that serve.
Well, it was also said, I don't know who did, where the numbers came from, but if, just in this county, if all the volunteer agencies shut down and were replaced by paid folks, the cost would be spectacular. You're talking well into the millions of dollars. So you're right, 10% doesn't, is a bargain that you can make.
Yeah, it's something, but it's not enough.
But this is the max that we could do, so.
Yep, I understood, I'd just say it is not enough.
Fred?
I have a couple of questions. The first one was in terms of the tax levy redistribution, seeing as how the, let's just say argumentative, there's 10 members that get this exemption, and they all get an additional X amount off their taxes. How is that new levy redistributed? Because technically, it should be evenly dispersed amongst everybody. It shouldn't be based upon the size of a house, the size of a lot. If it's redistributing based on just emergency services, then everybody, you know, he's putting in, she's putting in, we should all have the same amount. We're helping, and we all want to help. I'm not saying we shouldn't, I think it's great that people should be compensated, but the levy for everyone else should be fairly distributed evenly, not you've got a bigger house, you've got a smaller house, because that person might only see a $10 raise, but the other guy might see a $100 raise. So we need to ensure, for the sake of fairness, because emergency services are emergency services, whether you're over there hurt on the side of the road, or you're over there hurt on the side of the road, it's the same. So when you're redistributing these taxes to be levied, I want to make sure if there's any oversight we could have to ensure that houses are all equally distributed for that new levy, not you pay more, she pays less, he pays more, they pay less, so that that equal levy should be equal.
There's no provision for that in the state law that was passed, giving the towns or the taxing jurisdictions that ability to do that.
Can we put that provision in for our town to make it so that everybody's uniformly levied, as opposed to me paying more, him paying more, them paying? I mean, it should be fairly evenly distributed.
We cannot do that, but even.
Lori, you're right.
No, 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 nobody in the room. Somebody else is speaking, you'll get your chance. If everybody was evenly distributed, there wouldn't be any sense in doing this, because you'd have to make it up on the levy. Every year, there's a levy, we'll have one in November, that's determined. How much tax do we need to raise? Good, that's it. Now, that is determined, and we've been through this before with several people. According to your slice of the pie, to make it simple, of the entire budget and what the entire value is, is what you pay. It's always been that way. And it'll continue to be that way, except those people who get that advantage up to 10%, okay? That has to be made up with the rest of the citizens.
Sure.
And that value, and I haven't researched it, but I've told the average. And when you do averages, well, it's real estate. So some people, there'll be more on the extreme end and some on the other end. Comes out to less than $5 a parcel, according to what I've been told.
That would be nice to see, but we have no idea what that levy is. And being one of those people on the very higher side of the spectrum of it, I'd like to know, it would be nice to know that everybody's paying a fair share for emergency services, because I'm no different than him, her, or anyone else, and if he gets hurt, it's just as much of a need if I get hurt. So I just think that everybody should get, you know.
Then it just makes the whole thing move.
Well, no, we're taking the 10.
Let him finish.
I'm not saying to distribute it back to the people who are getting the deduction, but, so let's say you have $800,000 off of assessments. That levy that would be on that, that per-dollar levy, has to be redistributed. It should be equally among all parcels, not you pay this percent, you pay that percent. Why would it be more on one parcel versus not? This is emergency services only, I'm not talking about property taxes.
No, I understand.
I'm talking about emergency service redistribution of a levy. That's all I'm talking about.
There is no, I got you, let him finish. I promise. We do not have that ability under the state law.
So then I'll be made to pay more than the majority? I'm just throwing it out there, because that's just the way it is.
I can't say for sure, but probably.
But then the other side of the spectrum is, you know, whether or not assessments really are true to what the assessments are.
We're not going to get into that.
Exactly, but I think that it's only fair if we're going to redistribute a levy amongst everybody that's specifically for emergency services, that it should be a per capita thing. It shouldn't be, you know, you got a bigger house, you're going to pay more for emergency services, you got a small house, you're going to pay less, but that's not fair. Because some people don't even have their houses registered on tax rolls completely. So that doesn't make it fair to people like me who are fully registered with everything, and I want to pay my fair share, I just don't want to overpay my share. And I'm about to have another tax increase with this on top of next year's increase. So this is two increases for everybody for next year. So I'm just trying to get my head around how it equates, and it should be just uniform. If, you know, someone gets hurt, it's uniform that we pay more.
So noted, but there is nothing that town can do.
Can we look into this as an option to make it fairly level?
No, it's not an option, it has to be statewide. We, East Colneville, can't say we want to use that methodology, we can't.
Okay.
The state is very specific as to what we can and cannot do.
Okay, my second question on top of that was, in terms of personnel that are involved in the exemption, is this specifically for responders that are going to calls? And is there going to be a call ratio that you have to attend in a year to be eligible? Is this open to people, let's say commissioners, who are not attending calls? Or is it just open to the, you know, people in the trucks, people that are at the fires, fighting the fires?
Go ahead. Some of the commissioners aren't firemen, they want to get.
That's, exactly, that's what I was asking.
You know, some are, some aren't.
Mm-hmm, okay.
And the actual criteria is left to the local jurisdiction as to how they want to do it, meaning the fire department and the rescue squads in those particular jurisdictions. So they will set the criteria that they will be measured against to be eligible. And that has to be communicated to the tax assessor.
Wouldn't the fire district set that for the fire department? Because the district is part of the town and the department is not?
According to the way it's written, the department sets it.
So a company that's not part of the town sets what the town's people will pay?
No, they set their qualifications. They're the ones who best can say who's attending the meetings, who's attending training, and whatever. There's also people who are maybe a little on the older side, but they still have a contribution to make to the fire department. It could be administratively.
Absolutely, I understand.
Yeah, or there are those people that have had, I see a gentleman here who's probably had, I don't know how many, maybe I'll embarrass you not saying, but a lot of years as a firefighter. But you don't go out on calls anymore, Dewey, but you go.
At 96, I gave it up. I thought they wouldn't give me any more money.
So yes, so there are some people, I guess you would call them firefighters emeritus or something like that, but there would be provisions for that. People that are disabled as a result of being hurt in a fire, those types of things. But the law itself that the legislature has passed does not get into the level of what each department can do.
Okay, and my last question is, how many members of the board will be able to take advantage of this new exemption? Of you up there right now, how many of you are eligible for the exemption you're voting on today?
I don't know, because the criteria has not been there.
He's a fireman, EMT.
I'm not a fireman anymore.
He's a fireman, you were. Are you eligible because you were in the past?
I don't know what they're going to say.
Are you eligible because you're on the fire department?
Fred, I said, I don't know.
As a director? I mean, I'm just curious, you know, are you going to be eligible because you were on there? You and your wife were on there for years, so are you eligible as someone that was and is no longer?
I just said, I don't know what they're going to set as the criteria. I do not know.
Okay. Just trying to get my head around it, thank you.
Okay. And I didn't forget about you. No, he's next, he's next. Excuse me, he's next.
I'm with you.
Go ahead.
I think Fred makes an excellent point, it's common sense that the burden of the taxes should be equally shared to compensate the emergency workers. And just, I'm asking for a clarification, if I understand what you just said, you cannot set that, you say that's set by the state?
We can set the amount up to 10%.
All right.
But the.
How it's going to be paid? Who's paying for it?
It will come out of, as we talked about, the pie analogy where everybody has a slice of that pie. Well, if somebody has a lesser slice, the other people have to make that up. The rationale for that, of course, is to keep people here, which we desperately need.
Yeah, we all agree with that, that's common sense. But why should, let's say Fred has a much bigger house than I do? So if I'm hearing this correctly, Fred's going to be paying very more of the burden than I will? That doesn't make sense. We're not communicating this, thanks a lot.
It's the same way we pay taxes every day.
This isn't taxes, this is emergency services.
These are based, these are based on our tax bases. So this is the exemption that they're going to get is off of their tax base. So what does that, what does that tell us? That means it's got to be spread out. If we have five new homes built in town at $150,000 apiece, we're going to have another $750,000 of property to assess.
Right.
So that would, that would bring your taxes down. It wouldn't make it fair to everybody, but it's going to bring a percentage of yours down, it's going to bring a percentage of everybody's down. It's all done on a percentage basis.
I understand the logic.
And this is not a novel concept, it isn't, because we have exemptions for.
No, I'm not questioning it, they're entitled to that.
I know, but let me, you can talk, but I just want, I'm going to answer you. This is not a novel concept where we're challenging how it's going to be redistributed, because if you use that logic, how's it going to be redistributed when, because we already have exemptions, ag exemptions, we have veterans of the Cold War exemptions, we have several others for disabled veterans.
Well, I'm not questioning it.
But it's the same thing. When we, when they get their exemption, somebody's got to make that up.
Right.
And we don't do it like when you get the same amount as the next person. It's based on your assessment.
I see, so the person who has a higher assessment, who has a bigger house, is going to have to carry more of the burden.
For emergency services as well as everything else.
Yeah, as well as everything else, thank you.
It doesn't make sense.
Well, it may not, I think it does, but it may not to you, but it doesn't really matter, because like I said, it's moved. This is the way the state is laying it.
It's set by the state that way, you said.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Yes, sir.
I just wanted to say I disagree with Fred, because I think it makes sense that a more valuable house would have a little bit more of a burden, because there's more to lose. Maybe, well, I know it's not, you don't pay based on what you can afford, but anyway. The question I had was, is there some sort of a control as to how many people can have this exemption? And I thought it was lifetime, or maybe, you know.
It has to be renewed every year.
Right, so, I mean, just to see, you know, the extent of how many people are going to claim it, I think Fred had a point that, you know, maybe you were a member of the fire department 10 years ago, you know, some loose connection with, you're going to get it, you know, is there going to be, what's the normal staffing, you know, the volunteer fire department, is it 20 people, 30? You know, how many people are going to get the exemption? Is it, you know, within a reasonable number of people, given what you expect the needs are for staffing? Other than that, it sounds, you know, who's going to argue with giving a break to people who are, you know.
You know, and you're putting the point though, also, and I don't know what the right number is, but I don't think we've seen the right number yet for the terms of staffing, because particularly certain times of the day or night, it's difficult to get enough people to respond. But if the number that I was told by the county, the real property tax folks over there, did a quick and dirty, and I'm going to stake my life on it, but about average of $4 and change per parcel. Yes, some parcels are worth a whole lot more, some are worth a whole. So even if it was three, four, or five times more, we're talking 25 bucks.
Right.
I mean, and your point about the having more to lose, maybe the more valuable property, I can understand that too. But the big, the number-one driver of this is to encourage people to stay and reward them.
I got a general question, if people know, anybody knows. That siren that goes off, is that sort of a call for the fire people?
Yes.
Oh, okay. So it's like, you know.
Yeah, yeah, it could be a whistle.
You know what, though, that's a throwback, because anybody, almost everybody that's a member has a minute or a page that goes off and tells them where the call is. But I guess traditions don't.
Well, you know Verizon, I don't think works up here.
No, but this goes off the antenna that's on top of it.
Okay, some other device.
AT&amp;T.
Yeah, you're right.
I have a question, Joe, just, you know, I think, you know, I'm fine with it. But my question is, if it's based on your tax, like, so I'm not a first responder, but if I was, and I have a certain tax levy, and let's say the town decided to do 8%, so what I get might be very different from what someone else gets, based on our own property? I just want to understand that. So if it's based on your own tax base, you know, or assessment value, so then you have the issue of the responders and firemen and fire people getting different amounts.
Correct.
Is that correct?
That is correct.
And, you know, so.
With the exemption, you're going to apply for the credit. If you're one, let's say you're a husband and wife or another family member, and both of you own the property, one of the, and the other one will get to fix it. Currently, $200, I don't know if they've changed that to tax.
Yeah, no, I was just wondering how, you know, the people who would actually get the credit feel if the amount was to be made different for each of them based on that.
Oh, that's an interesting point.
That's just an interesting, you know, that would be, you know, because you know that real effort on their part.
Right.
Yeah, to find out somebody, you know, getting, you know, with a thousand off their taxes and he's only getting 200, whatever, you know.
Right.
It's just that, that's my concern for those people. That's it, but otherwise I completely get uncomfortable with it, so.
I just follow something. You know, on your income tax, they have where you can voluntarily give some money to some cause or other. They don't do that for profit taxes, do they? There's not any mechanism where you could say, hey, if you want to support the volunteer fire department, here's an extra 10 bucks, you know, check this box or something.
I've never seen that before, that's interesting. There's no provision for it, but I like it.
Yeah, it's the same.
Maybe they could raise a little more money than the.
Once you go to the IRS, it's never gonna, go now, to Colneville Fire Department.
About one chance of that might be present the next year.
You never know.
Yeah, no, yeah, I do. Anybody else have any questions or comments? Board members?
Okay.
Well, then we have some options here. We can recess this, because we have time on it, or we can close the public hearing and then decide to vote on it.
I don't think there's any reason to prolong it. It's run, it goes to the state itself. There's no change in anything.
No, yeah, it's either you're doing it or you're not. Or you can do the different percentage if you wanted.
Up.
It's up to 10%.
We're following their lead, as far as I'm concerned, it's a new program. We're following their lead, I've been here long enough that I've seen when we've had plenty of people to respond to fires.
We haven't had that.
Emergency calls, and I've seen towns with the whistle blows, and blows, and blows, and blows, and then some other town has to come get it. So if this is one way to keep one or two more people active, I say go for it.
I agree, I agree. So then we'll take a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Kelly, second. Second by Bob, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
And the opposed, carried. Now entertain if somebody wants to make a motion to accept the local law as written.
So moved.
Kelly?
I'll second.
Carl seconds it. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And the opposed, so carried. You'll hear more about the mechanism for this for those people who are interested in. I do want to make one other comment on this. Your school board can do the same thing, our school board. No reason why they should do it, because they have a big investment in that, in the school. Carl, how many times do we roll sometimes to the school, the kids are hurt in the gym or something like that? Or the big fire they had a few years ago? But that'd be up to those who want that to happen to lobby those folks for it. So that's just a side comment. Okay, we will proceed to the regular meeting, and we'll start with a July 10, 2023 Town Board Meeting Minutes. And you guys all have a copy of it there. And you also have a, you sent that, I believe, also. So is there any questions or comments on the July 10 minutes? That being the case, so let's entertain a motion to accept and approve those minutes.
I'll make it.
Kelly, and then Lori? All those in favor say aye. And the opposed, carried. All right, privilege of the floor, I understand we have one or two or.
Two.
Okay, just a reminder, it's three to five minutes, we're going to strictly abide by the policy. There's some problems we've had in the past. All right, who's first?
Dewey.
Dewey! All I want to say. No, no, Dewey, come on here. Is I killed my first drunk up here in 1935, we got water, we took out two milk cans, one in each hand. So I've been around a while, and I would like to say the people who are bitching about the roads now should shut up. Because this has really been a good, a good year. Are you in charge? No. I haven't seen that back. Tyler could make it to that. They're doing a hell of a good job, even my road, that little thing, pick them up, and today they're, I have never seen that since 1935 till now. So I think they're doing one hell of a job, and the people who are bitching ought to shut up. See, you said that a lot more eloquently than I said.
Look, can we do something to wreck his road?
Hey, I heard he looked, he got three bolts swing around from the horse, it's like a water loss.
Well, now, okay, it was.
Robert LaGonde.
All right, all right, we'll bring it back. Let's bring it back. I just do think, and you can disagree if you want, but this is the best crew, and the best-equipped crew, and the best-paid crew that we've had in my 10 years here. I'm really, really pleased with the way things are going. Not just the, of course, the leadership of Tyler, who's our highway super, but also his entire team. We've got great people working as a team. All right, who's number two?
Fred.
Fred, you're up.
I didn't say that.
I do.
John, sorry.
I was like.
Sorry.
About a week ago, I had an opportunity, I was at a family birthday party, and I was talking with Nick Cidimo about the Little League and, you know, that effort that he makes. And I wanted to just say publicly at the meeting that I was really, I didn't realize the kind of effort that Nick was putting in to try and provide an opportunity for the children in our community to participate, both in soccer and in baseball. And I just said, wow, I wanted to say publicly, I really appreciate it. I don't know if they get paid, he gets paid or anything, but, you know, he told me to travel down to. I don't know if they get paid, he gets paid or anything, but, you know, he told me to travel down to Chocan and a couple of other places to play baseball. And he said that Prattsville, Gilwalla, and Conesville used to have teams, now only Conesville has a team. He's a grandfather, and he's out there, you know, and I said, we all talk about getting our kids off the phones, and he's making an effort. So I just wanted to publicly say, I thanked him that day, but my opinion is anything they need to support that effort, I'm in favor of, because I said, efforts to keep our kids involved is better than on their phones, so.
No, I agree with that.
Yes, I just wanted to...
And we, we do pay, I guess the whole budget, I'm off, give or take a hundred dollars. I had to see the lady's numbers again, it's like fourteen, fifteen hundred dollars a year. So I think we're pretty generous.
Well, I'm, you know, I just wanted to say, I was appreciative to know that someone's willing to do that, and he's a grandfather doing it for the...
Bless you. Thank you. Okay. The assessor's report.
I don't have one.
Okay. I'm gonna tell, but for those of you who don't know, Marie's husband passed away last week. And I didn't wanna harass her for an assessor's report, especially this time of the year. This is sort of a slow time when she's out there looking at places for it, but... But Jim is here to do his code enforcement report.
All right, well, this past month, there were two certificate of occupancies. One permit renewal, there was actually two property searches, but one I did after I made up this list. Final inspections, there's one of them. Just regular inspections, there were four. Pre-site visits, just to talk about what they needed, but they don't, there were three, and then I did one, that, that number's wrong, it should be three, on, one was for a pool, and one was for a shed, and one was for footings. So just a cool room, so not busy smuggling around, but not bad.
Well, good, thank you. I need a motion to accept a code enforcement call.
I'll make it.
Carl?
Second.
Laurie seconds it, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carry. Town clerk, what have you been up to?
Too many phone calls, but one marriage license.
Okay.
If anybody sees Lizzie Dwyck floating around, congratulate her, because she's gonna be getting married next month.
That's right, forgot about that. Okay. Motion to accept the town clerk's report.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor, say, let's, Kelly, then Bob. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carry. Okay, the collector's report, this is not much of a, this is like the slowest time of the year. Except we're gonna start talking about taxes in a little while, but budgets. Sourd District Operator's Report.
Okay, so average daily flow rate was two thousand six hundred and sixteen gallons. The heating system is still shut down, no leaks, so the air pollution's at clean, methane levels at forty-five percent. Kinsley Power was on site to perform their die test. The manufacturer did finally ship the parts for the repairs that needed to be made. And they have received the authorization from the Corps to do the generator repairs. And they have started the separate tank inspections. Any questions, you can call Tyler, or Travis, there's too many Ts, sorry.
There's also a Ted over there, two Tylers.
Yeah, yes.
Travis, Tyler, and two Ted. Okay, motion to accept the Sourd District Operator's Report?
I'll make it.
Okay, second. Laurie, then Kelly, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carry. Historian Report.
I'm excited to announce that there's actually two grants, I'll let you talk about the other one, but the Historical Society received an eight thousand dollar grant for a technology which can be used offsite and in our, in the Couchman House, from Nigeria. So that was in the newspaper last week, there was a pretty good article about that. Tomorrow night, we have Diane Galusha coming to speak about the CCC, the Civilian Conservation Corps, and their work in the Catskills, so it's tomorrow night at six P M. at the church. Friday night, we have the unveiling of the new Manor Hill Creamery Historic Marker, that is also at six P M. at seven hundred Potter Mountain Road and the old Town Highway Department. And I've been working on some research, lots of different topics, both things I'm working on personally and requests from others, and getting ready for some fall events.
Thank you. And by the way, she's really works, especially, this is supposedly her time off in the summer.
She thinks there's something to do.
Well, you're doing it, and you're doing it well, thank you. I need a motion to accept the historian's report. Second. Well, Kelly, then Bob, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carry. Like I said, Tyler's not here, he has something to get out of.
Tyler's not here, but his report was that they were cutting shoulders and ditching on Hayner, Champlin, Briggs, East Conesville, Bolin, Tolles Hollow, as well as Pangman. They've been mowing the shoulders, cutting brush. They did end up having to delay their oil and stone until the middle of the month, but that's gonna be starting soon on East Conesville, Tolles Hollow, and a section of Bush and Durham. He did ask that everybody remain cognizant of road closures during that period of time. If you see a road closure sign, please don't try to drive on that road, because you're just gonna run into a spot where you're gonna have to turn around, and you're gonna be holding up their progress as well. So, yeah, that's pretty much what he gave me on that.
Okay.
Plus, they did something on Ten Road, because I walked down there today, and it's...
I was gonna mention that, Ten Road.
That came after he said, didn't it?
They did, they did the whole road there.
Yeah.
That's the first time I've lived in this town, almost fifty years now.
I've never...
That's the first time I've seen outside of To Plow that road, any maintenance done. Just a follow-up on Dewey's, those guys are doing a really good, great job right now.
I tell you, going by East Conesville Road, the way they put that nice ditch in now, where it slopes, before they just had a trench dug down it, and now it's got that nice...
Mm-hmm.
That's, they're doing a nice job.
Yeah, definitely going in the right direction with that department.
Yep.
And how will we know when a particular road is gonna be closed?
Oh, yeah, they'll have that posted about a week prior to the work starting.
On, on the road itself? Oh, that's...
Okay, motion to accept the Highway Superintendent's Report?
I'll make it.
Take a helm. Carl seconds it, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So carry. Okay, Supervisors County Report. You remember what I said last week, you're gonna hear a lot about this, about the Cobalskill PD? I wasn't lying. I'll give the short version of what's going on and what's being done about it. The, there were, depending on who you talked to, seven or eight resignation standard to the Cobal Village of Cobalskill in mid-July, for an effective date of August first. However, every one of them decided they were gonna take their vacation time instead of getting paid. So really, from mid-July onwards, there wasn't any. There was, with the exception of one sergeant who continued, who's staying there. There were two other people, but one was a probationer. In other words, he can't go out in the road by himself, and the other one is in maternity leave. So they were really down to one patrol car, which means, even though we don't wanna do it, our Sheriff's Department is obliged to provide law enforcement coverage for the entire county. So that really, really hurt in terms of response time, particularly the outlying towns like ours, or like up in the Sharon Springs, or somewhere like that. That hurt, really hurt. And they do about two thousand calls a year in Cobalskill. Yeah, I didn't realize it was that much myself. So anyway, I talk to the mayor at least three times a week. One of the things that is a interesting, part of it was, they were afraid that they were gonna be merged into the Sheriff's Department. They didn't wanna be merged into the Sheriff's Department, meaning the, the officers. However, there were three or four openings in the Sheriff's Department. What did they do? They applied for those openings, you can't make this stuff up. But they applied for those openings, they're all seasoned law enforcement professionals. So the Sheriff's Department is hiring them, taking them. Yeah, so anyway, that will get us up to our authorized manpower, I believe it's twenty-three.
So they didn't wanna merge with the Sheriff's Department?
But they turned around and...
But then they quit their job, and then they're going to work for the Sheriff's Department anyway?
Yeah.
Don't you be, don't you be using logic, Donald's Bob. Don't even try, what?
So, I mean, there's been a lot of poaching back and forth over the years. Somebody moves some one, moves some of the sheriffs to the village, and back and forth. I remember Dan Smith, he's probably changed three times since I've known him, back and forth. But anyway, now another one is applied, and, but we're at authorized manpower. But this is a killer for us, because again, we're covering Cobalskill PD, or just the village of Cobalskill. So with the permission of the Board, I negotiated with the mayor. Saying you put us in this position, and their Board, it's not fair to pick on her, just her. But we hired this person, we're overall authorized manpower. Until we attrit and get back down to twenty-three people, and if you want us to provide an increased level of coverage, we want you to pay for the, reimburse us for this individual. I didn't think that was going to happen. I gotta call an hour later, my Board likes the idea, we'll do it. So I'm gonna present it to our Board, they already have a heads up on what's going on. So present it to our Board on Friday, when we have our Board of Supervisors meeting.
Under the circumstances, though, the county is, you know, is being asked to do more work, isn't there a provision somewheres where you can, you know, up your number of deputies?
Yes, but we are, but we want them to reimburse...
Yeah, no, 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 I don't know, I don't know.
Oh, yeah, I just, no, no one's ever gonna argue that we need, I don't know if Saul says, we don't defund the police here in...
Yeah, if you're covering twenty thousand more calls in the course of a year, you know, you should have manpower enough to do that.
Right, but this is hopefully not a permanent situation.
Well, if we keep covering for them, it's gonna be permanent.
No, she hired a, they hired, a police chief and a lieutenant to add to their, two state troopers, retired state troopers. So they have a police chief now, again, because the other police chief resigned, with his six or seven other members. And they hired another gentleman, who's also a state trooper, retired, the chief.
So Sheriff's Department is the county?
Yes.
And then you got the town close?
Right, but it gets more interesting, because we have a, a special committee, select committee, that was appointed by me to look at law enforcement throughout the county. And does it make more sense to merge the two departments? Are there any efficiencies?
I don't know.
But we have somebody looking at that, and it could come down to, it's a good idea, particularly since there's, the coverage is a little bit thinner at night, particularly late, as if anybody's been on an ambulance or a fire call will tell you. When you need law enforcement, at that time, they're spread thin. They're there, but it's just not as many. So if that makes sense, we've already been told by a consultant, that doesn't mean you can say, we'll do it, say canes with the village, and they wanna do it. It has to go to a permissive referendum. Because once you, you don't have to have your own police department, you don't. However, once you set that up, you're into it for life unless the people of your village or town or city decide, you know what, we don't wanna do this anymore. So it would have to be sold to the residents of the village of Cobalskill. And this thing, if there is a merge, it's gonna take a very long time. I mean, a real long time, work all those details. So some of this might be just stop, stopgap, or they better build it back up to... They peaked at eighteen, but realistically, for years now, they've been at twelve or thirteen officers. That includes the chief, and a lieutenant investigator, and one sergeant. I mean, I'm not knowing, finding out all these things about the Cobalskill PD that I never knew, and never really thought I had enough, but... So this will continue. I mean, almost now, you're seeing headlines every week in the paper about some of the going on over there. So I guess that's all I have about county, there's a lot of things going on, but nothing out of the ordinary, or noteworthy for this venue. So if there's no questions or comments, I'll entertain a motion to accept the Supervisors County Report.
Is there anything going on with Black Creek Road?
Black Creek Road will require BUCO funding, I don't know how else to put it. That, that, and whatever period of time when that was repaired, I think it was after the flood, because if you just put the, put it back together again, the soil underneath there is like liquid. You will lose it in another year or two. So they've hired, or they're hiring, I guess people make a living going out and looking at these things and writing reports on what the solution would be. But yes, they are, they're aware of it, they wanna fix it. They're also gonna ask for money somewhere, because that is a very expensive proposition, especially if you're gonna cut even deeper into that hill, which probably, I think they should have, that, that was so narrow when they repaired it after the flood, you know what I'm talking about?
Yeah, the sheriff's attorney.
Pollen Hill Road.
Yes, though, yeah.
They won't, they won't work on that part though anymore, will they?
Who's that? No, that's where it caved in again, so I understand it.
No, it caved in down by the post office.
So you mean over by, you sure about that?
Yeah.
Yeah, right on the sharp corner where it always came.
That is...
It's only a couple, couple hundred feet over there.
I was told, so I never went over there, that it was over by Pollen Hill Road.
No.
That's, that's the other section that is still harder to, so...
It's horrible, but that's all...
It was passable.
If you went twenty miles an hour, and somebody wasn't coming in the other direction.
Yeah.
Okay.
And no, it's like, you go down the Five Creek, and then you turn, and it's that next...
Yep, I know the one you're talking about, well, that's, you're right. According to, it's a matter of geology, the, the stuff that's underneath that...
I can't imagine how they will ever fix that.
They've tried fixing that.
Years.
Since I can remember.
It's the type of dirt that it's on.
It's done clay.
Yep.
There's no way you're gonna make clay solid.
No, I mean, you have to build a bridge or some darn thing, and that's, that gets real pricey. Dig it all out and put a span, I mean, it gets really pricey.
I just think the only way to really repair it would be to move it, move it back.
I didn't know, clay underneath it from all the factors.
It could be, but at least you could get into some solid ground somewheres there. There, there's no ledge, you can get some solid ground, but that's, it's almost like building a new road.
Yep.
Right now, that clay, any water that is gonna shift that.
I just had an idea, they should just go right up to, from there, Whiteoff Road, but you still have Whiteoff Road there, and just forget about Black Creek Road.
That sounds great, but if you live on the other side of that, that's too happy. I guess somebody's not too happy about the buses, do you know buses? No. I don't see that being fixed, remember Striker Road? They abandoned that repair.
Well, of course.
Because FEMA wouldn't pay for it.
Now we got to rock bus, bus in both sides.
Yep.
I just curious about if they were gonna abandon Black Creek Road, too.
That's not, I have not heard that option discussed.
A hole in front of my house, considering that, anyone works, they might have all abandoned that road, too.
I know, no, I know, and I, I have a call into Dan saying, you gotta get up here. And the bridge, the bridge over on Hayner Hill there, the bottom of Hayner Hill, so...
It's my goal, huh?
Well, we're all happy for you. And we feel bad for you, Carl. Okay.
I gotta drive by his house to go home, will you feel bad for me, too?
No. Ow! That was mad.
I guess I've done something wrong.
Oh yeah, okay. Now, coming back to a motion to accept the Supervisor's County Report.
Did you do that?
Oh, I may ask for it, but I didn't get it.
Oh.
No, no, you was...
I make a motion.
Laurie.
I love serving.
Second from Bob. You okay with this, Carl? Yeah, okay. All is in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Carrie. All right. It's that time of the year, we're gonna start the budget process for 2024. It hasn't changed. I'll be asking those people who have parts, or, or in case the higher one, the whole budget, for their input for the 2024 season, as we call it, or budget. And we'll be getting together to talk about it probably sometime late August, early September, one-on-one. And the way the process works, just to repeat it for those of you who don't remember or don't know, is that I will put together as Budget Officer, a tentative budget. Okay? And what that tentative budget will show is the input from those persons saying what they feel that they, they need to do their job. That doesn't mean that's necessarily the way it works, that's why it's not final. And Carrie will distribute it to the board members, we'll just put it out to the public. And we will set a, a budget workshop to review that tentative budget. And I was thinking, and we don't wanna push it out too much, but Tuesday, October 10th. And of course, that's open to the public. It's not a participation event or for the, or comment event for the public. That's on the, while we go through the tentative budget and turn it into a preliminary budget based on the input of the members of the board. That then will be at a public hearing where we do solicit public comment as to questions, remarks, things like that, just like we had here for the local law. And I would li, I always like to wait to the last possible moment. The only reason I say that is events could happen, something could happen. I'd rather have, not have a budget in the books. I mean, if we had a disaster like we did Christmas Day about three years ago, that cost us $100,000 in repairs that were not subject to any FEMA reimbursement. So I like to wait to the last minute. So I'm going to ask if the board would mind we did it Thursday on November 9th. Is that good?
I don't know. What time?
Seven o'clock, like we usually do. And that'll be the, probably the only, it'll say in, in the public announcement, but it'll probably be the only thing, both of those things.
Seven o'clock?
Yeah. But again, public is always welcome and to see how we do that. It's just that they're, it's not the time for input. Okay. This is the busy time of the year for that kind of stuff. The June 2023 Supervisor's Budget Statement, you all guys resent that. You also, I also have a hard copy here if anybody would like to see it. I know you've read it line for line and you're ready to make a motion to accept it.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Laurie.
I'll second it.
Carl seconds it. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So Carrie. We have some budget amendments. And we'll see more of them as the year goes on, where things went up more than we expected or we had other expenses, which does happen, and then we try to juggle things around to cover it. So you have a few things here, I, I'm not gonna go through all of them. You'll see a $7,200 increase for the contractual expense budget for the, for the judge. And that's not new money in terms of taxes or fund balance. That money is coming from the J-Cap or Justice Court. I don't know what the rest of it is. But from the state. I'll be getting into what that money was spent for in a minute. But, so some of these are things that we may not have known about, or we couldn't really should budget for, or something we didn't know we were going to get. But that's not like a new burden on the taxpayers. There is some things about the retirement budget, expense budget, cause thankfully from the state, we get advance notice what our bill will be in December, partly because they want us to be ready to budget for 2024. So same thing with state retirement benefits. And basically, the other ones are just day-to-day things that we've already, we've got covered. So if anybody wants to see a copy of this, they're certainly welcome to see it. Any comments, questions? Yep.
Supervisor Cutters?
Aye.
Councilman Banter?
Aye.
Councilwoman Matice?
Aye.
Councilman Prudman?
Aye.
Councilman Smith?
Aye.
Thank you. Councilman House. In addition to all the good things that Ken had to report, which is really good stuff. Cause this has been a very busy month, or at least since the last meeting. Some of the stuff I'll share with you, not necessarily in quite analogical order or necessarily in priority, cause I'm just gonna go down the list. The person that we have doing community service with us was, has been doing a tremendous job. We took down the ceiling in the foyer. That was, the hanging, what do they call that? It's like a drop ceiling, that was falling down. So we took that down. We took up the linoleum on the floor in the kitchen, which was like shot. And, and the shelving in the, or cabinet in the room with the fireplace, took that out too. Cause that can't be there for what we intend to use it for. He took, he did a tremendous job on that. And we brought in a dumpster or bin. And I wanted a 12-yard bin, cause I didn't think it was that much. But Jimmy Ryan only had a 20-yard bin. So I said, "Okay, send it over." Well, this young man also, after he finished that, did some other things. He, he went out to the barn in the back. It's a small one. He could eat off the floor when he was finished with it. I mean, it was just garbage and all kinds of things that were stacked up on top of each other. He even single-handedly carried out a, I mean, like maybe an eight or 10-foot couch or so. And I came, I wasn't there, I came back and said, "How did you get that?" He said, "I got it in there, don't worry about it." But he's really good and he's got, so we're still gonna fill that bin up probably this Saturday. Cause he's gonna go upstairs in the barn, in the loft, there's a lot of stuff up there. And then we'll see what we can do in the garage to top off that bin. But we're in really nice shape there. The electric, when we were sorting that out, I had a bunch of light bulbs at home that aren't incandescent, which I just had in a box. Put those around just to see what works, doesn't work. And I'm sure I want to keep them, cause I can cry to the state that we need more efficient lighting. Come and look at what we have. So there's a method to that madness.
To the, the barns? Um, electric working?
I don't know, I didn't get to that yet. I get a little scared seeing those wires going out there. But yeah, we're gonna try them. There's one place where the new breaker box that we have, I throw it, I keep seeing one of the breakers is thrown, I throw it back immediately. So that tells me there's a short somewhere. And I don't, I'm trying, by process of elimination, I'm trying to figure out where it is. I also think there's a subcandle upstairs in those two big storage areas. Rooms at the top of the stairs.
There is.
Yeah, because I can't, I don't know where, I don't know where it is, by the way, but...
I don't think the electric was working up there when we were clearing it out.
I don't think so either.
Is that what that?
But I, I mean, I tried all the outlets, I tried the lighting and I don't know. But we'll get to it. Yeah, but when they were living there, they had, they had things plugged in, a fan, but who knows? But obviously that's something we need to look at. Mentioned the furniture that I talked about before? The Judge Jamie, I like the sound of that. Judge Jamie got a grant for about $10,000 from the state to buy courtroom furniture, which can double as town board meeting or any meeting furniture. And they are solid. Cause the, the logic is that, by the state is you need to have seating that somebody can't pick up and throw at the judge. Oh, that's true. So these here barely meet the criteria. But they, nobody's gonna pick up these, they're like church pews. They're gorgeous, solid oak, really nice. She, she got a grant for $10,000. They had to put them somewhere, so we put them in that room for now. Get some tarps and cover it over from the, with the dust. So that's making progress. The, I had somebody come in to take a look at the well and the pump. We have a jet pump. For those of you who don't know what a jet pump is, it only works in shallow wells, 25, 30, pushing it to 35 feet. It's in the basement and it's got a small, I'm guessing 12, 15 gallon tank, maybe more, I don't know. And the gentleman that I, I'd come in and look at it, he fired it up. And let's just put it this way, when we do get everything running and charge the building with your plumbing, we better go check every pipe because I have a bad feeling that there were some pipes frozen. Even the pipe that came into the pump was sending out water. Oh yeah, so that's, that's a big mystery as to where it is, and I hope it's accessible, but who knows? So I got a quote of $3,333 from Prosser Brothers, well drilling or whatever it is, out of Central Bridge. And he's proposing to put a, I've said, "I don't want another jet pump, I want a submersible pump, not a jet pump." Cause it's not that deep anyway, it's easy to service. And, and a new tank, and there'd be some wiring and, and new piping involved with that. So, but that's, that's another one of the, you know, the infrastructure things that we're focusing on. And I save the best for last. Working with the Historical Society because Nick Gerbiad, who has been extremely generous, does not wanna give money to municipalities. And I kinda understand that and don't blame him. So what, what he did do is with us managing the project, but the money going to the Historical Society, who will pay for it, up to $42,000, he's giving them $42,000 towards heating, ventilation and air conditioning. Which is, and then the quote that you, you received is probably, I'm sure, he's, he's pretty reliable, the guy that, that he... So we're gonna get that. I, I cannot say enough good things about Nick Gerbiad. He's done so much for the county. He's done two grants to our Historical Society, he's been very generous to Gilboa. And if he doesn't do a single grant, I hope he does, a single grant, again, the community owes him a great deal. And I'm gonna work with Ken to find some way that we can recognize him for his generosity. And I, I've never spoken to him, I know Ken has, Matt Vittable has also. And I really wanna thank Matt for his participation in helping us to get that grant for $42,000. So far, and I wanna do my darndest to not use money that we acquired through the tax levy. So far, it hasn't been necessary. Yes, we're using some of our ARPA money and that's gonna run out someday, but this $42,000 is tremendous. So you, you have to have these things or there's no sense in saying you wanna move into the building if you don't have heat, hot water, not even hot water, but the right facilities.
Water.
Water's nice.
Yeah.
If you wanna flush a toilet. Yep. Some of those toilets are highly questionable too.
They are.
Yeah. But we, by the way, we even have lighting now in the garage. So I was amazed when I put that light on. Holy cow, it works. So we're in good shape there and I leave the lot, it's not a lot of juice, but I like to leave the lights on at night in the front. So next month, I'm sure that we'll have a recommendation to the board as to how we want to recognize Nick. And whatever it is, I'm sure it's probably not enough. So, that's the Councilman House update. Any, I don't know if that's a report. But I'm gonna ask you to vote on it anyway. Motion to accept the update.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you. Second from Bob. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? So Carrie. That is the extent of the formal part of the meeting we, that we planned on. Does anybody on the board have anything that they would like to bring up or discuss?
I don't wanna hear it.
All right, forget it.
I'm just, that spraying of that track, I'm sorry, but it was really bad.
In what way?
Big clouds of whatever they're spraying on it.
Really? I, I saw, I was there, but I didn't see any dust.
I did, I don't like it. And little bitty signs that you can't even see.
That I didn't like.
Not going on it until it rains at least once.
Okay.
I just, ugh.
I know, these guys claim that the, I don't know, what is it, a half hour or something like that? After sprayed, it's in there and it can't hurt anybody. No, I know. I, I wouldn't go on it for the next day. But I did put it out on the website.
I walk my ba, my granddaughter every day and my dog, I won't go on it.
Okay.
It seems like there's something natural we could do. I don't know what, but there's things all the time on...
Well, he didn't use, he didn't use Roundup or whatever the, the chemical is. He used something else, he said, to save, I forget, and I don't know if it's organic, don't misunderstand me. But he said he didn't, he didn't use the glycophosphate or whatever the hell it is. I don't know. But he didn't use that. I just happened to be at the Councilman House, so I went over and just talked to him. And... All right.
You know.
I, I know, but...
It's gonna rain tomorrow.
Yes.
I hope it rains a hah, because...
Well, but you do remember, we lost the track because we didn't spray.
Well, I'm not saying that, just, you know what I'm saying.
No, yes, I do know.
That's not...
Okay. But works. Works helps too. All right, thank you. No, I appreciate that. Anybody else have anything? Okay. Then a, so we were not gonna have any other business things. I mean, everybody's welcome to stay till we shut the lights, I don't care. But we're gonna take a motion to review the invoices and then we're gonna do it again.
I'll make that motion.
Now he makes a motion. Laurie, aye? In favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Yeah, vote.
So Carrie.